Good evening. As Mr. Gooch is getting his computer fixed, I will introduce Troop Nineteen, who is going to present the colors and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Boys, if you would, please. Ask everyone to rise.
Color guard, prepare to present the colors. Scouts, up and shoot. Color guard, advance. Color guard, cross the colors. Color guard, hop. Color guard, post the colors. Scouts salute. Color guard, address the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, go. Color guard, regroup. Color guard, address this.
Thank you, gentlemen. Secretary Hanson, if you would, lead us in the board affirmation statement.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments, with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Grzafi, in absence of Superintendent Mitchum, you are the acting superintendent or whatever your title is for the evening. The agenda, please.
Yes, the agenda is recommended for approval as presented this evening.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goochus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Leading into the Treasurers' reports for Action Item 5.1 is the Treasurers' monthly report for May 2014, including the financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments totaling $3,855,879.09, along with the debt service payments for the bill of May totaling $2,544,881.25 for your consideration in action this evening.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on Treasurers' month report?
Mr. Grzafi, could you please explain to the public what you told me today when I asked you about the procurement?
Sure. There was a question a meeting ago, or two meetings ago, regarding the use of P-cards within the district and the large increase over time. And we, like many of you in your personal lives, endeavor to maximize a rebate that we are entitled to with the use of our P-cards. And so, very often, when you go to a grocery store, or you buy airline tickets, or you have your car repaired, you use your credit card, and you might get cash back bonus, you might get points, or whatever. And we qualify for rebate as high as 1% annually on all of the expenditures that we put on our P-cards on an annual basis. Lately, we've been encouraging our vendors, primarily our utility vendors, our gas, natural gas provider, as well as our electric provider, to accept payments for those charges that you might imagine are pretty large, as you extend them across 24 facilities throughout the district. And so, they receive their money quicker, we don't have to issue a purchase order, and we do receive a 1% rebate on those charges. Additionally, if we have a large adoption, let's say, a reading program, or math program, something that has a large amount of materials, we'll encourage that vendor, ask that vendor if they'll accept payment for those purchases. And again, let's say it's a $100,000 purchase, we would qualify for a 1% rebate or $1,000. And so, over the course of 12 months, we would qualify for rebate as high as $20,000, which, again, is a significant amount of money when you put it together over the 12-month period. So, again, there has been an increase in the use of our P-cards, procurement cards, over time, but it is really to better steward your money, taxpayer money, and do it in a way that maximizes the rebate at the end of each fiscal year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goochus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Leading into the Treasurers' reports for Action Item 5.1 is the Treasurers' monthly report for May 2014, including the financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments totaling $3,855,879.09, along with the debt service payments for the bill of May totaling $2,544,881.25 for your consideration in action this evening.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on Treasurers' month report?
Mr. Grzafi, could you please explain to the public what you told me today when I asked you about the procurement?
Sure. There was a question a meeting ago, or two meetings ago, regarding the use of P-cards within the district and the large increase over time. And we, like many of you in your personal lives, endeavor to maximize a rebate that we are entitled to with the use of our P-cards. And so, very often, when you go to a grocery store, or you buy airline tickets, or you have your car repaired, you use your credit card, and you might get cash back bonus, you might get points, or whatever. And we qualify for rebate as high as 1% annually on all of the expenditures that we put on our P-cards on an annual basis. Lately, we've been encouraging our vendors, primarily our utility vendors, our gas, natural gas provider, as well as our electric provider, to accept payments for those charges that you might imagine are pretty large, as you extend them across 24 facilities throughout the district. And so, they receive their money quicker, we don't have to issue a purchase order, and we do receive a 1% rebate on those charges. Additionally, if we have a large adoption, let's say, a reading program, or math program, something that has a large amount of materials, we'll encourage that vendor, ask that vendor if they'll accept payment for those purchases. And again, let's say it's a $100,000 purchase, we would qualify for a 1% rebate or $1,000. And so, over the course of 12 months, we would qualify for rebate as high as $20,000, which, again, is a significant amount of money when you put it together over the 12-month period. So, again, there has been an increase in the use of our P-cards, procurement cards, over time, but it is really to better steward your money, taxpayer money, and do it in a way that maximizes the rebate at the end of each fiscal year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goochus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Treasurers' action report includes a schedule of bills for June 2014. We have five funds there: the Education Fund, the Operation and Maintenance Fund, Transportation, the Tork Fund, and our Food Service Fund. For total bills payable for the month of June, $2,322,419.53 for your action.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goochus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Treasurers' information reports, as is typical, are included, including the summary of investments, the property taxes received, state funding update, as well as the school trust account activity through April 30th of 2014. If you have any questions, happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions? Just that the state funding has now doubled from four and a half, or five million, to almost 9.5 million. Is that correct?
That doesn't sound right, Steve.
The late payment from the state, I guess that's...
Actually, if you look at the report, really, the only thing we're due is a state lunch payment. We are basically caught up, which has not happened in a long time. We do anticipate that change at the end of next month, June, the end of this month, rather, June. We don't anticipate, as I've indicated, I think, at an earlier meeting, that any payments will be forthcoming for the remainder of this fiscal year. Even two months out, where we've been allowed to book it in the fiscal year, we don't feel that the state will have the wherewithal, if you will, to make payments or catch up to the schools' obligations.
Is that the, not just yours, but that's the opinion of the school business officials, the whole group?
We've got a pretty good word from ISBE State Board of Education officials, that just the backlog of bills are such that they don't anticipate having the revenue stream to allow those payments to happen, those categorical payments to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Next, consent agenda items.
We've got eight items for consideration this evening on the consent agenda, including approval of board minutes from our last meeting, May 27th, as well as the executive session meeting minutes. We've got gifts from Jonas Salk and Woodview Elementary's. We've got the Treasurers' working and working cash bond renewal for next year. We've got a couple, actually, it looks like three resolutions regarding transfer of interest from our working cash fund to our education fund, again, something that we do annually. Transfer of monies from the education fund to the debt service fund for principal interest obligations, that's so we can pay our lease payments out of the debt service fund, as is required by the accounting regulations. We've got the annual prevailing wage ordinance, as well as trips for Bowling Brook and Romeo Ville High Schools.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goochus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next, I would ask Mr. Echhorst to join me at the podium and his family.
We have a long tradition of honoring Eagle Scouts from the community and Valley View School system, and this is yet another one of the, I think, was it 300? Something along those neighborhoods in this area. Here, stand over here, guys. We've got to do this thing. Plenty of room back here. I'm going to read a whereas resolution and present that to Kyle. Whereas Eagle Scout is the highest rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas more than 2 million young men have attained the rank of Eagle Scout since the first Eagle Scout Medal was awarded more than 100 years ago. And whereas it takes a true leader to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Kyle Echhorst has been active in scouting since he was in first grade, and whereas Kyle performed an outstanding public service by providing and servicing permanent collection boxes for respectful retirement of worn United States flags throughout several communities, and where Kyle will be a sophomore at Romeo Ville High School, where he is a member of the marching Spartan Band and the Jazz Band, who also volunteers for the Romeo Ville Area Historical Society and the Lockport VFW 5788 post, and whereas Kyle formally passed his Eagle Scout Board of Review on 27 April 2014. Now, therefore, it be resolved on this day, the 9th of June in the year 2014, that the Valley View School District 365U Board of Education, the faculty and staff are extremely proud of Kyle Echhorst and congratulate him on his accomplishments in the school district and in the community. We all wish this outstanding young man nothing but the best in his post-secondary education and his future career. Thank you, young man. Want to say a few words? The flag disposal thing is kind of a big deal, because when we were kids, we always, you know, you had to treat the American flag with respect, and how you dispose of that, some people, you know, some people just kind of throw them away. But there's actually a process by which many flags are taken to the same spot at the same time and burned ceremoniously. And if you've never seen one, it is kind of cool, and it's very respectful, as the way it should be. And to have somebody take the initiative to provide collection areas throughout the community, or the communities, as it were, and do that, it's a great initiative. So, thank you very much. So, enjoy the rest of your summer. And by the way, you don't get this without that. Mom and dad's involvement. So, thank you for coming.
And here you go.
Next, I believe we have the Jane Adams Middle School IESA Scholastic Bowl qualifiers.
Bring them in. Principal Paskavage, if you will.
Good evening, community, board.
Dr. Paskavage, I'm sorry. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. So, I have a question for the board today. You get an opportunity to answer a question. Josh, could you please raise your hand? Josh answered this after 11 words, so you get the same 11 words that he got, see if you can get it right, and then I'll complete the question. Originally formed by barbed wire and later changed to concrete slabs.
Say it again, please.
Originally formed by barbed wire and later changed to concrete slabs.
Could you use it in a sentence, please?
You only get 11 words. All right. So, Josh, to that, answered, and I can't tell you, because I'm going to do the rest of the question.
Well, no, they're buzzing when you know.
This piece of construction served as a physical barrier in a European city, as well as a symbol of the divide between East and West during the Cold War. Anyone got it yet?
The wall.
Berlin Wall. So, Josh got that after 11 words. Tells you the kind of kids that we have.
Get them in here, because I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Bring Josh. Josh, come up to the microphone, since you seem to know something about geo-global politics.
No friends.
All right, here's a question, and it's directly related to that question.
Oh, God.
The, the Berlin Wall, there was a speech given by Winston Churchill. We all know what that was called. It's called the Iron Curtain Speech. At least, anybody over 25 or 30 will know what that was called. That speech was given at Westminster College. Where is Westminster College?
England.
That's a good guess, but it's not correct.
No.
And, since you're interested in this, it's relatively close, and a piece of the wall is found at that university, in Fulton, Missouri. So, Winston Churchill, in 1946, went to a little bitty town outside of St. Louis, about an hour from St. Louis, called Fulton, Missouri, and gave that speech. And if you ever have the opportunity, the only reason I know that is because I've been there. But if you ever have the chance to go there, they have a fabulous museum underneath the campus. It's actually underneath the cathedral, where they give, the whole Iron Curtain, Berlin Wall, the whole thing, is there. So, it's just, like I said, it's about 45 minutes outside of St. Louis, or an hour, maybe. If you have a chance to go see it, go do it. It's very cool. So, sorry to... I thought, I was hoping you'd have an answer.
I'll kind of add to this, too. It's not on the speech, but I found it pretty interesting when my coach came back, my basketball coach, and he said, "Listen to this team from New Lennox." I was like, "Okay, I'll listen to your story, Jared." And he sits down, and he says, "They have a class. They have a Scholastic Bowl class at their school, where the kids actually go and have a period of Scholastic Bowl every day. And these kids, without that class, ended up taking out the New Lennox team and making it to the state tournament." That shows how awesome these kids are. And then, I think these kids, we had a great formula. We had great kids, we had great parents, and we have one of the most dedicated teacher coaches that I've ever worked with, and I mean that, Jared Kogler, to introduce this Scholastic Bowl team.
Thank you. The one thing that I wanted to mention that I think is important for the board, the community, parents to know and realize, when we arrived at the Peoria Convention Center, we had to go up this escalator, it was a two-story escalator, and the IESA people that ran the event said, "Oh, we're really excited that Bowling Brook Jane Adams is here. We're actually kind of pulling for you guys," which, I'm going to say, is pretty impressive, considering most of those people are downstate, and, well, we're not. But I think it's a reflection of our community, our board, the administration, parents, and the kids that go in and out of our school. And what we've been able to build, and the reputation that precedes us, is very impressive. And these kids are very deserving. I can't thank them enough for carrying that on. And I'm excited that when we go places, people are excited to see Bowling Brook Jane Adams. And so, I want to say thank you to my team first. I will go ahead and introduce them, and they're going to come and say hello. I did kind of joke with Dr. Mitchum the other day, said I had to find a way to get here this year, so this year it's via Scholastic Bowl. Which is good, I'm excited about that. Up first, we have Charlie Steenstra.
Trevor Mormon.
Mitchell Fry.
Josh Kurian.
Amit Bhat.
Jacob Greenberg.
Jacob Harvey.
Abby Spengler.
Peyton Ekin.
James Iwani.
Hannah Young, our captain.
Kate Magella.
Naomi Pupilapati.
And Camilla Scott.
Thank you.
They probably didn't tell you guys, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting, did they? Can't say you got to go home and study, right? Just kidding.
I have no questions, no stories, no funny things.
You've got to have a story.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Mitchum and his absent parents, students, and community members. My name is Loretta Fertute, and I am the Assistant Principal at Brooks Middle School. The administrative team, staff, and students are very proud of all of our athletic teams at Brooks. Here to honor and introduce our eighth-grade girls' volleyball state qualifiers is one of the coaches, Ms. Molly Deser.
We wanted to apologize to Jared, because Brooks took his annual claim to fame at the board meeting and winning basketball state this year, so congratulations, though, to Scholastic Bowl. And I thank you for inviting our eighth-grade volleyball team to be recognized tonight. This is the first year in a very long time the girls made it down to the Elite Eight Volleyball State Tournament. It was my honor to represent and be represented by this group of students during several of our many team talks, as you all know you have with girls. I continually tried to find the right words to express to them how unique and special they were as a team and what I knew they could accomplish. Walking into the gym, their athletic abilities and talent were easy to recognize, and if you were to check any of their GPAs or their class schedules, you would see that their achievements in academics were also extremely evident. This group truly defines what it means to be a student athlete. But it was their intrinsic motivation and their drive, their resilience, and their incredible work ethic that separated them from any group of students that I've ever had. They built a culture within their team that pushed everyone, including myself, to be challenged and to work harder. I strongly believe that being a part of a team, in a competitive team, teaches us valuable lessons that we apply for the rest of our lives. At a very young age, this group of students already realizes what it means to be a member of a team, to bring your best every day, and to celebrate each other's victories as you would your own, because that means you're better as a whole. I'm thankful to have the opportunity to work with this group, and I look forward to watching them evolve as student athletes at the next level. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Brooks eighth-grade volleyball team, starting with one of our managers, Xavier Diaz.
Natalie Mitchum.
Melody Racis.
Sierra Perez.
Liz Mestias.
Taryn Noble.
Claire Juscoya.
Brooke Patterson.
Hallie Hall.
Alexis Johnson.
Soha Khan.
April Lowry.
Gabby Galucci.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Quigley, Vice President Goochus, Secretary Hanson, members of the board, and members of senior leadership team, audience, and members at home watching on TV. Gives me great pleasure to announce our head girls' track coach, who's going to say a few words about Sierra and her wonderful season that she had this year, Mr. Ted Relstef.
Good evening, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to come up here and speak before you, and speak to the successes of our student athletes. And I'm truly blessed to coach wonderful student athletes like Sierra. One thing, before I get to Sierra, I just want to make mention that we did have 12 seniors on our team this year, and I'm proud to say that all of them will be attending college next year, and two of them will be competing in track and field. So, that's fantastic that they're continuing on.
Sierra, come closer, so you can be on TV.
What?
Come closer, so you can be on TV. Little more, little more. There you go.
But Sierra had a truly outstanding season. She did multiple events for us, but she specialized in the triple jump and had a remarkable season. She qualified for the indoor state track meet and jumped her best of the season, a 37-foot, 1-inch to take second place. She won in the triple jump at two invites and placed very high in others. And then, obviously, the culmination of her season was qualifying for the IHSA state track, girls' track and field meet. And there, she jumped her best, placing third overall, and earning all-state honors. And she's a... And she's a tremendous young woman, a very hard worker, and glad to say she'll be back next year, and we expect big things from her next year as well. Thank you.
And just to follow up with Mr. Relstab, we go off on the boys' side. Our head boys' track coach, Mr. Harper, is also one of our football coaches, is unable to be here tonight, and all of his runners and performers were also not able to be here tonight as well. But to kind of echo what Mr. Relstab said, of our six all-state athletes that we are honoring this year, four of the six are going to be returning to us next year, which is a very positive opportunity for our sports programs. But the highlight again from our boys' track season is Krishan Pruitt took seventh in the triple jump this season down at the state track meet. So I'll make sure that these certificates do go on to those individuals, and also honoring Miguel in his all-state charge in his tennis competition as well. And he's up in Rockford right now, preparing for a tournament. He's the real deal when it comes to tennis. He's doing the national tour and doing very, very well, so you'll see more of him to come, because he's only a sophomore, competing against men and doing well. So, congratulations, Miguel, and thank you, board, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. McRobbin.
Don't change the water at Romeoville High School.
Just to put it into perspective, she jumped 37 feet, that's just about as long as this room from front to back. We might be a little longer than that, but from right here to the back of that room, in two hops, that's 37, that's got to be 37, close to 40 feet. Can you get 40 feet? Next year? All right.
That's right. And just to echo that, Krishan, our senior that placed seventh, he set a school record in jumping 45 feet this year in the triple jump, so outstanding to Krishan, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, Bolingbrook High School.
Good evening, President Quigley, members of the board, senior leadership. I have the great honor to introduce Howard Burnham and Art Paul, our male and female track coaches at Bolingbrook High School, to talk a little about their all-state athletes.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for letting me speak. This year, the girls had a successful season, and that's for all of our girls, and I got to thank our coaches, who couldn't be here tonight, Coach Pril, Coach Armstrong, Coach Overdorf, and Coach Seffos, for a job well done in all of our events. But I'll just epitomize our season. In conference, our varsity earned second place, and our farce off earned first place as well, one of the toughest conferences in the state. At state, these four young ladies helped us to place 29th out of 70 teams. And with that said, Charlotte Stennis, who is now, Charlotte Stennis, who is now a junior, broke a school record running 59.66 seconds.
57.
57.66 seconds, okay, in the open 400-meter dash. Like I said before, this is a school record, and she earned seventh place in state. Jessica Watkins, to my left, she ran 11.93 seconds at conference, that's also a school record, and she placed sixth in state as well in the open 100-meter dash. And these four young ladies right behind me earned sixth place in state in the four-by-one, with a real good time as well. And it's safe to say, and it's a real good thing to say, that all these ladies will be back next year, in order to help us to be highly qualified for state as well. Okay, hopefully, top five.
I'd like to recognize our state qualifiers. Four of them are here, three of them are not. The three who are not here are Damari Portis, who is a state qualifier in the four-by-100 relay, Joshua Collins, also in the four-by-100 relay, and in the 100-meter dash, and Ben Jankrowski in the pole vault, he's down at U of I, getting ready to take classes down there in the fall. Our four that are here are state qualifier in the long jump and the four-by-100 relay, Four-by-100 relay, Tyler Elmore. 400 meters for the second year, Peyton Chavon. And our second pole vaulter, Jesse Pape. Both pole vaulters made finals downstate, and the way that things went, they tied each other for 11th place at the state meet. So it was a good chat. And I also want to mention that John Hall, Jesse Pape, and Ben Jankrowski will be competing at the All-Star Senior Meet, that'll be this weekend at Juliet West, featuring All-Star seniors from Illinois, Wisconsin, and Iowa. So I would best of luck to them at that meet.
13.9, in case you wonder how high. He'll be at 14 next year. Next, liaison reports, any in all, from my right, please.
Yes, I have two liaison reports, and Member Sikora may speak to one of them also. The finance committee, Member Sikora and I have been having some conversations, and she brought up board expenditures, and the finance committee will be making a recommendation to the board at an upcoming meeting to cap all board expenditures for the year at $2,500 a board member. So you guys will see that. If you have any thoughts or anything, please get that to me, so I can... But we will have the discussion once that policy is written. I'll be working with Attorney Hanson, and we will submit that at upcoming meeting for a first reading. Also, the academic committee met, and you guys are going to see the presentation that we had. We had some good conversations about the elementary challenge program, and it ended up taking over the whole meeting, but it was some really good conversations about a lot of hard work that our challenge teachers have done as a group from the two schools that they represent, and just a tremendous amount of work that they've put in over the last, at least, a year, right? And I really appreciate the time those teachers have put into that, and other administration and staff from their buildings, and Dr. Gilbert, appreciate your leadership on that, too. So you guys will see that presentation, and that's what I have.
From my right.
Also, at that meeting, we discussed the results of the 7th grade, as far as being kind of targeted, as to needing some special supplementary things to add to the math curriculum. And that was discussed, and will continue to be discussed, as to what we can do to help out that 7th grade math.
I guess tonight's a fitting night with our academic and our athletic accomplishments to sort of make the trifecta. The Wilco Area Career Center announced its Students of the Year for 2014, and happy to announce that six students from Valley View, three from Romeoville High School, and three from Bolingbrook High School, were recognized. From Romeoville High School, Hannah Eichelberger in the culinary arts. From Romeoville High School, Brianna Vayara, and I'll apologize now, in the intro to health professions. From Romeoville High School, Jesse Mendoza in fire science. And then, from Bolingbrook High School, we had Andra Seiya Kramer in cosmetology. We had Jalen Robbins in medical office. And our final student of the year was Octavia Roberts in nail technology. So the Career Center at Wilco is doing a lot of good things and recognizing many Valley View students, so our hats are off to them as well.
Member Sikora, I had a follow-up question I meant to ask you at the academic committee, and I didn't, so I'll ask you here. Is there an issue, in your opinion, is there an issue on the curriculum at 7th grade, or what we're doing at 7th grade, or was it more in particular supports needed for that particular cohort of kids?
I think it's a combination, and one of those is the fact that the 7th grade curriculum is very loaded with a lot of curriculum, such that it's almost a day-by-day lesson, which might need to be taken down some, but that's not for me to do. The other is Glencoe that they're using is more of a book made... It first came out with Common Core, but it is not the best solution for Common Core, and so that's why we're looking at something else.
Thank you.
Any others? Moving down the agenda, any audience members who wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none? Oh, please step forward, state your name, where you're from.
Alonzo Walker, resident of Bolingbrook. I just want to briefly digress to the May 12 meeting. I mean, board member, Ms. Hanson, Cindy Hanson, had shown a great deal of patience with me regarding a law concerning disclosure of information that may be considered of a confidential nature in an open forum like this. I had made a Freedom of Information Act request for a copy of that law to date, I haven't got it. I think I made a request on May 13, and I haven't gotten it. And this isn't a commentary about you, it's just the fact that, I guess the old adage is trust but verify, so I just would like at some point to get a copy. In the interim, I ran across a letter that dealt with that subject matter. I don't know if anyone on the board is familiar with it, 2011. The letter was from the District of Bolingbrook, District 365U, to the Attorney General's Office, which addressed matters of confidentiality and public disclosures of information that may be of confidential source. And so doing, Ms. Hanson, may I give you a copy of that? Is that appropriate at this time? I don't know if you're familiar with it.
You can give it to Mr. Rand, and I can get it after the meeting.
Okay, who is that?
In the bag.
Okay, in that particular document, it covers that, this particular matter, and it also talks about an exemption to it, that I have met that exemption, and I just want to know if, once that exemption is met, those matters could be discussed.
Are you talking about a specific FOIA request?
No, I'm talking about the opportunity to discuss the matters in a public forum, because I think the issue with the board, and I think Board Member Goojus went to Grayden Lance to express his concern about his discomfort with that, and I believe I've met the test in what needs to be done so this matter could be addressed.
Well, first, without seeing the document that you're referring to, I can't comment on that, but I would like to just back up, I'm not a board member, you mentioned.
Did I say that?
Yeah. You also said I'm an attorney.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, so you gave me two hats, and I only wear one, I'm the attorney for the board.
Well, you were so proficient, I figured you could handle that.
Making me, getting me busier. As far as, you also mentioned a FOIA request, and a FOIA request for, the Freedom of Information Act allows for the public to have access to public records of the body, of the public body, so of the school district. Laws are not a matter of this public body. They may be something that this particular school district and all school districts in Illinois are subject to, but that's not something that a local governmental entity is required under the Freedom of Information Act to disclose. That doesn't mean that you and I can't have a conversation off, you know, elsewhere, but I will follow up with you after, I'll follow up with you after I see what you're referring to, because I don't think that's...
Into that gentleman, okay. All right, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, student due process cases A and B. I might remind the board that cases A and B will be separated out due to the nature of the cases, so...
At this point, I would recommend student due process case A be, have action taken.
Motion, a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion is second. On case A, all those in favor who vote of the action being taken as recommended by the case officer will vote yes. Those who do not approve of that action will vote no. With that, Madam Clerk, take the record. Unless there's any discussion, which there can't be, because it's student... Yeah, mine.
Member Vanegas?
Wait, one second. Go on, why don't you explain that to the board?
There was a recommendation by the student, the due process officer for a student, and the board does not accept that, or may or may not accept that action, but the recommendation has been made one way, and some of the board members may think a different direction. Rather than approve these as one item, we're going to approve them as two separate items. If you would, take the roll, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell? Member Sikora?
No.
Member Felice?
No.
Secretary Hanson?
No.
Vice President Goojus?
No.
President Quigley?
No. So that motion does not carry.
Student due process case B, as presented, correct, recommend approval as presented. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Stay.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, action reports, Ms. Kinder.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Grisafi, if you would, large kitchen bid awards.
Yes, we've got 13 schools receiving large pieces of kitchen equipment, primarily steamers, racks, things of that nature, primarily elementary schools receiving steamers replacing 20-to-30-year-old stoves, becoming more labor and energy efficient. We had six respondents, and we are recommending the bid go to the lowest bidder, Douglas Equipment out of Bluefield, West Virginia, with a base bid of $115,614.
Motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the stoves?
A little bit.
Hearing none, seeing none.
I said a little bit. Assistant Superintendent Grisafi, this is all done inside the food service. The funds and all that are self-contained. Correct, in the 11 fund, correct. For lack of a better term. I'm tempted to go slightly off subject, because I see Ms. Gibbons in the back end. I'm so curious as to her thoughts on, and your thoughts on, all the things we've been hearing in the food service world. There's a local school district that's like opting out of federal guidelines, there's legislation to change federal guidelines, some school districts are calling overbearing. As far as I know, we are like very much ahead of the curve on that front. So, I don't know, maybe a position, maybe in a great position paper from her or something would be... We certainly could provide you with that. I think with our large free and reduced lunch count, it's pretty difficult to walk away from the federal reimbursements, as you might imagine. Some of those school districts that you referenced... They're north. Yeah, a little easier position for them to take, and so... But then also, I think the standard piece has been that it's been overbearing and too hard, and there's, you know, folks that are... Are we finding that difficult? I know in my conversation with Megan Gibbons, our Director of Nutrition Services, she said it is a very difficult challenge to meet, in terms of, you know, meeting the nutritional requirements and the composition of the meals, and still offering a quality product that the students are going to want to eat. But, you know, we've been saying that for years, and I think our students are adapting. They're eating healthier than they ever have been, and so I'm not saying the challenge is met, but... is met, but I don't know, if you want to hear from Megan, I could certainly ask her to come up. Sure. Sure. I think the disappointment I saw was that a school district nearby said that they couldn't get the kids to buy healthy food. So, they were, in order to make money, they had to sell unhealthy food.
Sure, you're referencing District 214, which is, that's correct. They turned down $900,000 in federal subsidies because they sell over $2 million in à la carte every year. They have open campus high schools at Will State, and they have less than 40% free and reduced. We are a completely different ballgame. We are 62% free and reduced. We are K through 12 district. We are closed campus. We concentrate very much, and have always concentrated, on promoting the full meal to our students, so an entree, dare I say that word in the eyes of the state, but an entree, fruits, vegetables, and milk. That is our bread and butter, no pun intended there, but it truly is. We will not turn down federal subsidies. We thrive on them. In terms of next year, the regulations are really going to affect our à la carte items, which is called the USDA Smart Snacks. It's going to affect both foods and beverages sold inside the cafeteria, so certainly our à la carte items will need to meet all of the parameters, and there are many nutrition criteria. But, almost more of an impact will hit our vending machines, especially in our high school, high schools. We don't operate those. The buildings operate vending machines, but those fund athletics to, you name it, within the schools. They're also going to have to meet these same à la carte parameters. School stores, any fundraisers are going to have to meet those, so that's where you're going to see the greatest impact. But, no, we will remain on the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program again. That's what we thrive on, that's what we do best.
Thank you.
Good question.
Must be doing something right. My son's not losing weight at BHS.
Poor kid.
Just saying.
He's a very skinny child.
And he's, well, I know he's growing, that's my point, is he doesn't come home complaining, so. Kitchen bid, stoves, roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Gary?
Two pieces to our next recommendation regarding workers' compensation, stop-loss insurance, and our third-party administrative renewal. For the stop-loss renewal, we are recommending we remain with Safety National. They seem to be one of the only providers of stop-loss insurance for workers' comp in the nation. We have a favorable renewal, $2,900 increase over the prior year expiring premium of $87,000. We are increasing our SAR, self-insured retention, by $50,000. If you see from some of the attached exhibits, we have not hit that in the last four, I think it's four or five years, so we feel comfortable in recommending that change. We also are recommending a four-year renewal with Gallagher-Basset for our TPA services, Third-Party Administration Services. They are proposing a 1% increase for 1415, no increase for 1516, no increase for 1617, and a 2% increase for 1718, which we feel is very favorable for their services. So, that is the recommendation at this time.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote?
Student accident portion? If you remember that we had a lot of discussion about that last year. For years and years, it was included for a very nominal fee. When we changed our carriers, that fee went up considerably, and we felt like it was a coverage that we just couldn't underwrite. And so, because of the law change, we are required to offer catastrophic coverage, and so that is included in this baseline package.
Good.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
No.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Abstain.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Final action is for our property casualty, student accident fiduciary liability insurance with Mezaro Financial for one-year period in the amount of $567,111.
So moved. Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
No.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, Ms. Hawkes.
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 13.1 this evening is the Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. We're seeking your approval on 32 items for certified personnel, 38 for classified personnel, one for administrative classified personnel, and eight for administrative certified personnel.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Staying.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Before I move on to my next action report, the board just approved the Consolidated Action Report, and within that report, there are two recommendations for administrative hires, so I'd like to just introduce those to you this evening. The first one is Mrs. Patty Chow. Patty, if you could stand. Patty has just been approved for the Assistant Principal at Irene King Elementary School. She's been in the district over nine years. She worked as Curriculum Coordinator or Reading Specialist at our elementary schools, and she's also had three years of administrative experience outside the district. So we're excited to have her working with April. We know they'll be a great team. And our second recommendation is for the Principal at Bolingbrook High School, Mrs. Yolanda Jordan. If you want to come on up, Mrs. Jordan, we'll let you say a few words. She has been in the district for over eight years as a teacher and an administrator. She's presently the interim principal at Bolingbrook High School. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I will be brief, just correct, I haven't had an opportunity to teach in the district. I've worked as a dean and assistant principal, and now I'm currently the principal at Bolingbrook High School, which I'm very proud of. So, good evening, President Quigley, School Board, Senior Leadership, and Valley View Community. I am honored to have this opportunity to serve the students and family in our community as the principal of Bolingbrook High School. Please know that this is not something that I take lightly. I have spoken with Mr. Quigley in regards to the importance and significance of this role, and I welcome the chance to work with all stakeholders to make Bolingbrook High School an institution of excellence. Thank you for your belief in my leadership ability and your commitment to Bolingbrook High School and Valley View School District in general. Thank you.
My second action report this evening is 13.2. The board recommending to the board the approval of the proposed changes in the policies and procedures regarding nutrition services personnel. These changes will be incorporated into the working agreement dated July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
I think it's important to mention, this is 13.2, that we just approved the Nutrition Service Working Agreement, which is tied to, the raises are tied to CPI, which is a long-term sustainable for the district. Also, they're on merit base, which is a little bit different in Valley View, but I appreciate the Food Services being in the forefront of that.
Moving down the agenda, Information Reports.
Yes, sir. Information Report 14.1. We would like to present to you this evening a Challenge Program Audit Recommendations. I'd like to invite Dr. Susan Shokardi, who is part of LJEF Educational Resources, and to come forward and share some information with us regarding a program audit that we conducted of our gifted program, our challenge program for our elementary students in Valley View. Through the years, we've had many conversations with parents and administrators and staff, recognizing the strengths of our existing program, but also recognizing some areas where we could improve that. I see many of those familiar faces of parents in the audience this evening. And so tonight, Dr. Susan Shokardi is going to share with us some of her experiences in working with our existing gifted committee and gathering feedback, and share with us her recommendations for the ongoing work. So I'll introduce Dr. Shokardi, and then Dr. Kelly Gilbert's also here to answer questions. She's the Director of Data and Assessment, and Elizabeth Martinez, our Executive Director of K-5. Thank you. Susan?
It's really nice to be here this evening. I want to thank the Board of Education, the administration. And do we have a lot of challenge parents in the audience tonight? Will you raise your hand? Oh, it's good to see you. Yes, we do have some challenge parents sitting up here as well. Well, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I want you to know that this will be the Cliff Notes version. I know you have a detailed report, and at the end, what I'm going to do is just present the highlights. And if you have any questions, you can ask at that time, or you may choose to send an email, and we'll make sure that the answers come back to you. All right? So. I started out last October taking a look at Valley View's Challenge Program, and in order to collect information, you really needed to have a variety of collection tools in order to make sure that you are going to get a very accurate view of a program based on perceptions, based on hard data, based on observations, and so on. So I started out with focus groups and interviews, and all the challenge parents were invited to come to a focus group, and I simply asked questions such as, what do you find the strengths of the program to be, and what areas do you see the need for improvement? So, asking the parents these questions, having a focus group with the principals, the assistant principals, the directors, going to the buildings, talking to the challenge teachers, and also, Dr. Gilbert helped me determine four schools that had a representation of the demographics within your district. And we went to Irene King, Scoff, Ward, and Pioneer. That was the other school. So, we also interviewed teachers in those four schools just to get a better understanding of their perception, not only of their own students, but the students that they may send to the challenge program. Classroom observations. The district is using a TeachScape evaluation form for observation, and it really gives information, looking at the classroom environment, looking at the teacher, looking at the learner, looking at student engagement. I also use that form in order to get a better understanding of the teachers, their teaching style, and what was actually going on in the classrooms. As a comparison, in those four non-challenge classrooms, or those four non-challenge schools, I did the same. So I was in the classrooms, taking a look at what the teacher was doing, what students were doing, what they were learning, and so on. Data analysis, because of the changing times and taking a look at ISAT, and ISAT data really isn't valid and reliable to the point we would like it to be, especially knowing that Common Core is coming in, the best data that made sense to me was looking at NWEA for two years. So just taking a look at the reading and math scores of students who are in challenge classrooms and students who are in the non-challenge classrooms, and that is covered in your report as well. So, strengths of the current challenge program. These are perceived strengths coming from the parents, the administrators, the teachers in the program, and somewhat the teachers that are not in the program. They see this as a benefit, and you are to be commended for having a full-day program for gifted. It is very difficult in these challenging times where there's deficits in spending, and you're not getting the grant money that you used to get. And we're finding that many districts are actually looking for ways to cut programs such as gifted. So you're to be commended for making sure that you are paying attention to your highly academic ability students, just like you do students who were here tonight for academic bowl and for sports and other programs. Accelerated curriculum. Teachers thought, as well as parents and administrators, that this was a strength. Accelerated curriculum simply meant that if I'm a third-grade challenge student, I was going to be introduced to the fourth-grade curriculum. So where this may show up as some of these perceived strengths, you may see later that this is also an area where we need to improve upon. Great teachers, they're certified and gifted, they have been a joy to work with, they're highly enthusiastic, they are very knowledgeable, and very open and welcoming to some of the changes that we were proposing in the program, and they were really part of those decisions. Engaged learning. Seeing that as a strength, engaged learning has to do with students that are actively involved in the learning process. High expectations for performance. These are your top students. You would expect nothing but the highest epidemic scores from them. Opportunities for peer collaboration. Field trips, hand-on projects, probably more so than in the regular curriculum. Peer acceptance. Sometimes children who are highly gifted are sometimes different. They don't have the same likes and dislikes as their peers. By putting them together, they have people and children of similar interests that they're able to have conversations with, that get excited about learning about things that their like peers in other classrooms may find boring. So it gives them this opportunity to really go deeper into curriculum. And active parent involvement. Obviously, you have a lot of parents in all your programs that have involvement in their child's education, but I think when I look at gifted parents, they go the extra mile many times and are looking for ways to enhance the current curriculum, find places that they can take their students and other opportunities for learning that go beyond the classroom. So these are the identified priorities for improvement. Looking at the identification process. Right now, teachers were saying that we don't have the right children in our challenge program. So looking at that identification process and finding ways to tweak it. And this year, I know we changed somewhat as we're looking for next year. The COGET scores, which are the cognitive abilities test, is going to be your first screener before NWEA. But we're still going to do some work as we move forward, and with the gifted committee, taking a look at what recommendations that they have. And those will be ready probably by the end of December. Differentiated curriculum. These are strategies that teachers use. If the teachers have not had enough professional development, sometimes it gets very difficult to manage students in the classroom. We assume that because they're gifted, that they come at similar ability levels. Oftentimes, you may have readers that are at 11th grade level, and you may have someone else that's reading at a fourth grade level, and these are third-grade students. So it's helping the teachers come up with ways for differentiation through the curriculum. Improving the language arts curriculum, this was something administration had mentioned to me at the very beginning when we first came in, so we looked very closely at it. So we looked very closely at it. Accelerated curriculum for reading and language arts really doesn't get into those higher thinking skills that often gifted children need. And bringing in the William &amp; Mary curriculum this year, and I thank you for supporting that. We used that curriculum for the last six weeks of school as a pilot, and we're going to continue that into the next school year. Improving the transitions from first to second and from fifth to sixth. Teachers indicated that when children are coming into the program in second grade, that they have to compact two years of curriculum, because your first graders are now in a third-grade curriculum, which may or may not be appropriate. So we have to make sure that those second-grade skills have been met before they're moving on. Also, taking a look from fifth to sixth grade. Parents indicated that their fifth graders are always in the honors programs at the middle school. But there's also other students who have not been in challenge that are in those honors classes. So our plan is to really study that a bit further this year to see if there's any indication that the challenge students are not performing at the level that they need to, or the challenge and the rigor is not there. Or if it is there, then we're fine. But it's the language arts program in particular that we really want to look at. Develop a common gifted curriculum. Right now, if you walk into any of the challenge classrooms, you may not see the same curriculum being taught. Teachers, of course, are basing it on the students that they have. They may base it on interests, but the district has a curriculum in place that's aligned to Common Core. We want to make sure that students, if they're in a third-grade challenge program or a fifth-grade challenge program, have opportunities for similar experiences, learning experiences, and similar objectives and expectations for learning that would permeate all fifth-grade classrooms. Some of the parents would indicate, well, I have a child at this school, and you know how parents get together, whether at a baseball game or some other event, and they say, well, my child's here, my child's here. They're in the same grade, but they're learning different things. So we're just wanting, making sure that we're meeting the Common Core standards at a higher level and that we give them similar opportunities. Provide professional development for the challenge teachers. This is really important for them. For the longest time, I would say for the last, what they're telling me, it's been quite a few years since they've had any specific training for teachers of gifted students. They have had training in Common Core, they've had training in language arts, but oftentimes your gifted students comes with a different type of need at a higher level. And we're taking a look at providing them with the differentiation, looking at differentiation of teaching strategies, looking at curriculum, looking at product and process, and the learning environment to make sure that we're meeting the needs, the diverse needs of the children in the classroom. It was also very clear through the focus groups and talking with parents and administrators and listening to the challenge teachers, that maybe the right children worked in the classrooms. But really taking a look at the data, it indicated that you may need to consider expanding the program. And as I work with the gifted committee, we have been doing some research on program options. And while full-day attendance for your very gifted student that is all-around gifted is commendable, there are students that may be gifted just in reading, or gifted in math, or gifted in science. And there are other program options out there that would benefit other students. And I would say that in every single one of your elementaries, there is probably room to provide some additional programming on a part-time basis for these students. And the last one, this came directly from the parents. And the parents have asked for the Board of Education and the administration to provide them with more information on the gifted program. They would like to see a scope and sequence. They would like to know ahead of time what students are learning, what units of study, so that they can adequately prepare their child ahead of time. They would like an opportunity to get together as challenge parents, to talk about the needs of gifted children, to talk about parent concerns, places they may go, things that they may do with their children, things that their students are learning. So hopefully, the board will think about that and provide some opportunities for them in the future. As I looked at the conclusions, I mentioned already that there are very few districts that do provide full-time gifted services. And knowing the size of your district, I think it's important that you continue to serve the needs of your highly gifted in a full-day program. But take a look at options for extending partial days or just pull-out programs for students who may be gifted in other areas. The students are thriving. I find that your parents are extremely supportive, and they're very appreciative of the program. That came out loud and clear during the focus groups. The challenge program adds to the overall quality of the district. And when I say you're to be commended for that, when you want to draw parents into your district, they want to know that you have a variety of programs, whether it has to do with athletics or academic programs that meet the needs of the high achievers, as well as children who may be struggling, and you're doing that. Looking at a need to reevaluate the program. So maybe making some tweaks to the full-day program, but certainly not to eliminate it. I know there were some small rumors out there early on that the program was to be eliminated. Under no circumstance was I given any direction to look at ways to cut the program, but ways to strengthen it. And that's exactly what we're doing. That growing need for expansion of the program, using other program models, that will become more evident as I complete my work with the challenge committee, the gifted committee. And the last one, need to develop a more inclusive model that represents the demographics of the district. When I take a look at the district, just to give you an idea, and I really looked at three areas. Low income, percent enrolled in the challenge program were 15%. Yet the district has data at 62% low-income, free and reduced lunch. Limited English proficient, the district count is 13%. You have one student in the challenge program that didn't even equal 0%. Students with IEPs. It's good to see that you have six students in the program, which gives you a .03 percentile, yet in the district you have 14%. And it's not to say that all students with IEP are also gifted, but there are students that have very high academic abilities that could benefit from a program just to provide that challenge and rigor for them. It becomes challenging for the teachers because they need to know how to provide programming for these students. So the recommendations to the Board of Education, as I finish up this report, retain the current challenge program for an unspecified period of time. And as long as the need is there for those highly gifted students, it's a great program to get them started at elementary and move into your honors programs at the middle school and the high school. Reexamine the identification process to include ability testing, achievement testing, and observational data, in that order. And I know the administration has already done that this year by looking at ability testing first. They looked at the achievement testing from NWEA, and then included, as they did in the past, observational data coming from teachers making recommendations. And expect challenge teachers to implement the William &amp; Mary curriculum. The pilot program provided students with the rigor that they really needed. The teachers were very complimentary of the program. They liked the excitement that students have. They like the enrichments. They like the ability that provided students with interdisciplinary connections to science and social studies. And we're going to look at that for a full nine weeks as we move into the next school year. And provide challenge teachers with summer curriculum planning time, which we are planning to do this summer. I'm going to spend a week with them doing planning for the first nine weeks of school, based on curriculum that they already have, looking at the Common Core standards and ratcheting it up so it provides the rigor and based on differentiation. Continue professional development for challenge teachers. That is part of differentiation strategies that they really need to work on, especially in the area of process. And process has to do with the instructional strategies of how you're presenting new information to students and what you do to break those groups up, based on the differing needs of your students. The other one has to do with the social-emotional needs of gifted students. Sometimes children that come to a gifted program know they don't fit in, and sometimes have trouble actually socializing with their peers in a social way or really an academic way, because they're so used to knowing the right answer. And sometimes, all of a sudden, they have other children that are at their level, and they're afraid to be wrong or afraid to admit that they're wrong. Sometimes emotionally, they get upset. And teachers need to have some experiences and some training on how to deal with that, as do parents. Provide collaboration time specifically for gifted teachers. In the past, whenever you've had trainings or collaboration time, they have been put in with classroom teachers. But they really need that time to collaborate as a group, especially in the area of planning Develop an action plan for expansion of the challenge program. And that should come with the work of the gifted committee. Publicize the program. Include a scope and sequence of the curriculum by grade. And we just lost a light. And lastly, provide challenge parents with opportunities to meet, to discuss, and learn about the gifted child. And are there any questions from any of you?
Thank you. Dr. Gilbert or Mrs. Martinez, can you guys come to the podium? I don't know if she can answer. I think one of the things that we should mention is, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, for this year's incoming second-grade class, we use the same standard that we used for entry, I think it was a 120 on the COGAT, as last year. Is that correct?
Correct. The composite, the... Last year, we administered the cognitive abilities test, otherwise known as the COGAT. We administered the screener assessment, and the composite score we utilized last year was 120. This year, we looked at all three domains, more specifically, the verbal, nonverbal, and quantitative. Those were the three measures within the cognitive abilities test, and utilized a few different layers. But the final composite score of a 120 was utilized, as well as the teacher recommendation and their MAP data for the recommendation for students into the program this year.
Okay. So for the COGAT, it was 120 last year or 120 this year? With that, I think it's really important to note that our incoming second-grade class will have twice as many African-American students and almost five times as many Hispanic students. The program will have, how many more sections than last year for second grade? Four more sections for second grade?
Two for second grade, four total between all-grade levels.
And I think that speaks to a couple of things. I think that speaks to all-day kindergarten. I think this will be the first class from all-day kindergarten. I think that speaks to great instructional practices out of our kindergarten and first-grade teams. So great job to all those involved. And also this year, for the incoming second-grade class, which is a little bit of a bump from previous years, minority students will make up the largest percentage of students... Minority students will not be the minority in the challenge program, while keeping the standard the same. So I think that's really important to note. The one concern that I've had throughout the challenge process and being involved in the challenge process is the identification of students. And one of the things that I struggle with is how we identify them. Does that match the rigor of the classroom? It has appeared to me at many times that our bar to entry was higher than the curriculum. And I guess what I think would be best is if the bar in the curriculum were even. And I do worry often that, you know, you don't want the bar lower than the rigor of the curriculum, setting students up to fail, but you don't want it so high that students aren't in it that could do the work. So I hope when this is done, that that finds its home, you know, where...
And a lot of that work will be occurring this summer with the specific curriculum work that the challenge teachers will be participating in. As Dr. Shakari mentioned, it'll be a week-long process of looking at that scope and sequence, especially focusing on the first nine weeks, and then continually develop that throughout the school year.
And I think the William &amp; Mary pilot, I'm in the weeds for some, but some of the challenge parents out there understand, I think the William &amp; Mary pilot has been good because one of the difficulties as you move into the grade fourth and fifth grade is finding material for the kids to read at their reading level, but that's also appropriate. You know, I struggle, you know, fighting the trend, thanks, challenge parents, I don't want my daughter to read The Hunger Games yet. And some of her friends are reading The Hunger Games, and she's like, I can understand it. I'm like, I know you can, but I don't want you to read that material, you know, quite yet. Sweetheart, please stay nine for a little longer.
And the other pieces of those elements, specifically looking at the curriculum, both with English, language, arts, as well as math, is that Common Core calls us to go deeper into the standards. And that essentially is what we are doing, more critical thinking, more inquiry-based learning within both of those content areas, and including the social studies and science areas as well. So taking that comprehensive approach and looking at the curriculum and the standards is really the charge that is being focused on this year.
And then my last point. Member Curran, who used to be a board member, had his children go through challenge. And one of his common complaints was the transition to middle school. I know that we have figured that out in math, thanks to some great math teachers, but we still struggle, as was mentioned, in some of the other subjects, to find the appropriate place to meet the needs that these kids have. So I hope we continue to work on that in, I think, pretty much all subjects but math. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Board policy, first reading.
Yes, sir. With Information Report 14.2, I'm presenting two policies for first reading. Policy 6180 Extended Instructional Program and Policy 6185 Remote Educational Program. These are presented for first reading and will be brought back for second reading and approval at the upcoming board meeting in July.
Any questions on that? Next, Legal Services Report.
No report.
AFT Report.
No report.
Thank you. Valley View Council Report. Valley View Council Report.
No report.
Thank you. Valley View Office Personnel Council Report. Apparently no report. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions in the public on actions we have taken this evening?
This isn't directly on actions you've taken. I just want to make a quick apology. The gentleman handed me a copy of the response to my FOIA request. I guess it got lost in translation or in the mail, so I'd like to apologize. It was sent. Okay?
Thank you. Any announcements by the board this evening?
We have a fans meeting June 20th here at the Administration Center at 6:00 PM. And all of the contact information is there for parents and community members to become involved as we head towards the new school year in August.
I'd like to take this opportunity to inform and invite everybody to the 11th Annual Christmas in July Gala Dinner Golf Outing hosted by Hart Haven Outreach. They are a organization here in town in Bolingbrook that helps Valley View students in high school that are in need or at risk, and they do a lot of counseling, help with tutoring and so forth. This is by far their largest fundraiser of the year that helps support this wonderful program. It is Wednesday, July 16th at Bolingbrook Golf Club. You can go to hearthavenoutreach.org, and there's a separate link right there for everything, but you can play golf and have the dinner. There's a wonderful silent auction and a Taste of Chicag-- or Taste of Chicago, Taste of Bolingbrook, sorry. There's a lot less people at this than there is at the Taste of Chicago. But you can do golf and dinner, or you can come just for the dinner, but it is an absolute fabulous event and an opportunity for you to pick up some early Christmas gifts. So please, hearthavenoutreach.org, come support it. It's a wonderful organization that helps the students in high school in Valley View. Thank you.
And if you do like I do, you buy the gift at the Christmas in July. Forgot that you bought the gift, and then you find the gift sometime in, eh, May, when you're cleaning out the closets. I do have one, and it's not announced, so I should have mentioned it under the Legislative Committee. In Springfield, you know they passed a budget, saw it in the papers, what have you. What they did was they basically passed a half-a-year budget. They will probably have to come back and readdress that sometime after the election. They did the politically expedient thing, which was to kick the can down the road. In their efforts to address some issues with education, the Senate sponsor, a gentleman named Andy Minar, who's from Central Illinois, I forget what town's in south of Springfield he's from, but introduced a bill called Senate Bill 16. Senate Bill 16 would redirect how some of the formula for state aid is given. Our two senators that represent the lion's share of the district, Bertino Tarrant and Senator Pat McGuire, Jennifer Bertino Tarrant and Senator Pat McGuire, both voted in the affirmative. That vote was cast on the 27th of May. Obviously, the House didn't have time to take that up. It will be interesting to see that if the House decides to take that up in veto session or in the subsequent lame-duck session between the transition. After much, for lack of a better word, going back and forth to make sure where we would fall in that category, our school district would be a winner in that situation. There are others that will not. But our senators took the vote, and I want to commend them both for that. It's not an easy thing to do, but, because they have some districts that may not do as well under the new formula, but we would be a winner in that deal, and I just want to thank them both publicly. Also, while I'm on the mic, I want to thank my fellow board members. At the Banshell announcement the other day, we also decided to name the auditorium at the Bolingbrook High School after Mayor Roger and Pat Clare, both dedicated community servants for many, many years. Pat Clare, Roger's wife, worked in the district for many years, as did Mayor Clare very briefly, and he was also the director at Wilco for many years. And I just want to thank them for their efforts in that night. As I said the other night, it was, it's an appropriate thing to do for people who have supported our district and particularly BHS in spades. Mayor Clare donates $20,000 a year in scholarships. 16,000 of those go to kids at BHS. The other four go to the other districts that are represented by the village of Bolingbrook. With that, we also have tomorrow is the Enrichment Foundation's annual golf outing at the Bolingbrook Golf Club. It's a nine-and-dying type of deal. It's not 18 holes, it's only nine holes. It starts at 2:00. And I bet you, if you showed up there at 1:15 or 1:30 and wanted to play, spend 80 bucks to play some golf at the golf course, they'd probably be able to fit you in. And if not, let me know, and I'll find a spot in my foursome for anybody that wants to show up. It's a good time. They also will have some raffle items to raise some money, and I'm sure they'll have some silent auctions. Deb?
I know that we have rounds of golf that will be in the raffle item. We have several other good gifts that have come through also, so come out and find out.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other announcements by fellow board members? Any announcements by the administration?
No announcements.
Any announcements by the public? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Don't everybody jump at the same time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. The ayes have it. Have a good summer, as it were. Be safe.